Hello and welcome to the Monday, February 26, 2024 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 22, 2024 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Eckert, can we please take roll?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig? Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Thatz?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here, we have a quorum. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
I would like to acknowledge the correspondents listed, and we will move directly to committee Are we ready for education? Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Yep, so when we met, we did a book adoption review. There are two books that will be on tonight's agenda, and a new course proposal for conversational and compositional Spanish II. The rationale for the new course is a general education course. It's developed and geared towards students with IEPs who may need a less complex two-year language option in order to meet the language requirement for college. We did briefly discuss the district calendar, and we spent quite a bit of time on the pride survey results with Ms. Maggio and the Empower Somerset representatives, Ms. Taylor and Clarita and Mr. Josh Wolfe, so, which was a very enlightening overview, very well put together.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, I will move on to the HR Committee meeting. I stood in as acting chairperson, so reviewing those items, just as in all the other committees, you'll hear me mention this again in governance, we reviewed the district calendar. You know, right now, for those who aren't aware, we've used all of our allotted snow days, so I guess hope for no snow, so it doesn't ruin spring break, so fingers crossed. But we've, I think collectively agreed not to make any changes. We did review a sick bank leave request, a general leave request. We talked about the Senate Bill S. 2434, which is a way for schools to leverage something potentially to recoup some lost money from the S. 2 funding. There's no board opinion on that at this point in time, but we may make a comment in the future. And then we did an update on hiring of referendum positions, which is going very, very well. I think we have 10 of 20 staff positions hired, and we have almost all of the building monitors. We need four more, four more of that. So we're 10 more staff and four more monitors, and that's it for the HR meeting, and we'll move on to operations.
In operations and finance, primarily, we were talking about the beginning of the budget process, and Mr. Eckert gave us a run-through of how the budget is being built, going through the numbers with a fine-tooth comb, and trying to find a way to arrive at a balanced budget. At first glance, there's quite a large deficit, up to the million-dollar hole in the process, largely due to decreased funding, those types of things from the state. But Mr. Eckert has been going through, along with Michelle, and they've found a way to fill a lot of that gap with adjustments and corrections, recovering funds from other years. But that process continues, and the budget will be ready to be presented on time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I will quickly review the governance committee meeting, also held on February 21st. We, like all other committees, reviewed the district calendar again, so no additional comments there. We did discuss the upcoming board retreat on March 25th. Basically, the discussion there was basically, we're trying to discuss what will be discussed at the board retreat. I will be sending out a draft agenda to get feedback from board members, and at our next committee meeting, we will finalize the agenda for our board retreat. And that's really what we have for that. And last but not, we had an informational update about the CUSAC assessment. There was an onsite visit, the executive county superintendent, to perform the review, and it looks like everything's, you know, we're an exceptional district and passing scores, so we'll get a final report soon, May or June, with the final, final assessment. But that was, for all intents and purposes, a successful visit. And that concludes committee reports. Does anybody else have any questions or anything to add? Okay, thank you. All right. So Board President's Report, just an update quickly on our long-term district planning. We have one more meeting left, which I believe will be a Sunday in April, and after that, we will then have supposedly finalized our kind of high-level district planning, and that'll be able to be shared with the public, so we're very excited, and we want to, again, thank the public for their input in the, in the planning phases, and we'll have some great information to share with you soon. And that'll conclude my Board President's Report. We'll move... Oh, yes, sorry. All right, I appreciate the reminder. We are actually going to be implementing two ad hoc committees. We do have the first ad hoc committee, which is going to be the Activities Fees Subcommittee. I know it's been a discussion point, there were people up at the, at the lectern commenting on it last week, we've had a lot of emails and ongoing discussions, so we're going to continue with the same members, continuation from last year, that'll be myself, Ms. Nurse, Mr. Lee, and Ms. Thatz. And then we'll also be implementing a Communications Ad hoc Committee. We haven't finalized the members of that, but we wanted to announce officially that those two will be put into place, and we're just finalizing who will be on the Communications Ad hoc Committee. And that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's wonderful to see everybody here. Last year, when I became superintendent, my first day was this board meeting where we recognized the, the teachers and Educational Support Professionals of the Year, and I will be getting to you momentarily, but I know everybody is really here for, because they really want to talk some budget information. While I have a captive audience, I'm going to take two minutes of your time to just mention that over the next couple of board meetings, you are going to be hearing a lot about the budget. And there's two things that I want to keep you in mind. There's that structural hole, which I've talked about for a long period of time, that we need to somehow fix in Hillsborough, largely due because of the state aid cuts, and then there's things that we can do outside of that as well. And what I wanted to point out was something really special that has taken place during the course of this year financially, and some things that you may not be really super aware of unless you read board information in detail. So behind me, you'll see, there's 2324 additional funding opportunities since the approval of the budget. Now, these are additional funding opportunities, and what do I mean by that? Let me give you a concrete example. If you have your electric bill at home, and for some reason you don't have enough money to pay it, and your friend comes along and says, "I'm going to give you $100, but you can only spend this on your water bill." Well, you're kind of beholden to that, you can only spend it on the water bill, you still have that electric bill you have to pay. So while what I'm about to show you does not fix the structural part of our budget, when people are normally in a budget hole, it's like, woe is me, what can we do? There's not much we can do because we're in budget trouble. Well, let me go through some of the things that we did just this year, so that everybody has a comprehensive understanding of what was accomplished in 2324. Through advocacy, and not just my advocacy, but lots of people here, as well as members of the educational community, talked to the state to get $602,000 restored from the state aid cuts that happened in this year's budget. Additionally, on top of that, we got $626,000 from the state budget specifically to address necessary safety concerns and upgrades at the Hillsborough High School auditorium. Of course, we have to thank the taxpayers of Hillsborough for passing two referendums for our security department, as well as to hire 20 certificated staff members. So it's good that we did all of this, but that's not all we have done. We have hunted for every grant and for every opportunity that we can for children in a whole variety of ways. So what else have we done this year? I'm not talking about the grants that we get every year, Title I, that the schools get, or IDA that all schools get for special education, I'm saying, what did we hunt and peck for so that we can deliver more for the children of Hillsborough? The first thing, and you'll find it on tonight's agenda, we were awarded $310,456 in stabilization aid. It's the first time Hillsborough has received stabilization aid, and we are going to be using that money to address issues pertaining to safety and security infrastructure. Last year before I was superintendent in Hillsborough, I found out Hillsborough got zero, and it was a goal of mine and Mr. Eckert's and Ms. LaFever's to make sure that we brought something home for Hillsborough this year, we brought home a little over $300,000. Earlier this year, we were awarded a grant of 100, over $175,000 by the School Development Authority to help offset HVAC repairs at Hillsborough High School. We were awarded over $21,000 as part of the Food for Schools Grant, where our food services are going to be working with a local farm in town and make that connection, where we could be actually serving and eating foods that are, that are grown right here in Hillsborough. Mr. Handler recently was able to procure $191,000 in grants. Now granted, that is payable in over four years to help improve our cybersecurity here in Hillsborough. Couple of board meetings ago, we procured $307,000 in grants from the New Jersey Learning Acceleration Grant for high-impact tutoring for most of our third and fourth grade, at mostly fourth, third and fourth grade levels. We have got play-unified grants, where we expanded high school soccer and an elementary club. We've got an affinity credit card grant for concert attire, and $2,000 from an invention land grant for STEM PD. So we have this budgetary hole, but we are looking in a whole lot of different ways as to what can we still do for the students in Hillsborough. Advocacy work, and not just mine, a lot of you were involved in that too, led to $1.2 million. We have no entitlement to, but we got it. Thanks to the taxpayers of Hillsborough, we were given $2.8 million. That's not something we were entitled to, you, the people of Hillsborough, decided that that was good for schools. And then in addition to that, my, my administrative staff and my teaching staff put together over $1 million in grants during the course of this budget year to make sure that the students in Hillsborough are getting the things that they need. We didn't have to do any of this. We could have said, woe is us, we have a budget hole, what are we going to do? We didn't take that lying down. We're continuing to advocate for fair funding in Hillsborough, and while we have unfair funding, we're going to find other ways to do what we need to do for kids. The one thing that I want to point out to everybody here is, while we procured this about $5 million in the course of one year, it doesn't help fill our budget hole. Similar to the electric bill versus the water bill, all of these things, you can see what these grants are for, and what this allows us to do is something we would not be able to do for children in our own individual budget. So I thank you for all of your support when it comes to that. I thank everybody who's been involved in the finances of this district, and that putting together $5 million in a non-building referendum, you don't ever see that happen in a school district. So I'm very proud of the work we've done here, and if you weren't aware of that, I just wanted to make you aware of some of the things that we are doing. We will have continuing budget conversations about next year's budget over the next several board meetings, but you can expect that we will be taking similar approaches, looking for every dime we can get for the children of Hillsborough. Thank you for humoring me, because I know you're not all here for this. I know what we're actually here for today is the fact that we have a series of absolutely outstanding educators to be recognized today, and even though some other educators are not being recognized today, I've had the opportunity to get around to the schools on both school days, before, after, weekends, helping shovel snow with some of our custody. We have just people that go above and beyond in all positions here in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. It was the main reason why I wanted to come back here, because I knew the boots on the ground beat any other school district I had ever worked for. Today, I'm very happy to be calling up some principals who are going to help recognize the best of the best for this year when it comes to our Education Services Professionals of the Year. So the Board of Education, we are honored to announce everyone, and principals had to meet certain criteria in order for these professionals to be recognized, and when I do put the person's name up, I will be reading who you are, what you do, and then you and your principal can come up and meet President Marini, and if all of the teachers can wait up there for a final round of applause for everyone, and then we'll call the Education Services Professionals after that. Congratulations to all of you, these are well-deserved. So let's move into our Teachers of the Year. We have a third-grade teacher from Amsterdam Elementary School, Lisa Brattis. Sixth-grade social studies teacher from Walton Road Intermediate School, Sean Long. Kindergarten teacher from Hillsborough Elementary School, Shawna Guzzi. Industrial technology teacher from Hillsborough High School, Eric Rosenthal. Health and physical education teacher from Hillsborough Middle, Middle School, Jennifer Third-grade teacher from Sunnymead Elementary School, Simana Morali. Resource teacher from Triangle Elementary School, Maria Atlas. Second-grade teacher from Wood Fern Elementary School, Andrea Sass. Special education resource teacher from Woods Road Elementary School, Emma Meany. The reason why it's a pleasure to be the superintendent of these schools is because of the outstanding work that you do every day. Some of you I've worked with, some of you I've just seen, some of you I've hired multiple times, I know that, coming back here in Hillsborough. How about a round of applause for our Teachers of the Year? Thank you, teachers. We will now be calling up our Educational Services Professionals of the Year. Principals, you can just stay there if you want, for your, for your people. An instructional assistant from Amsterdam Elementary School, Lisa Burgess. An instructional assistant from Walton Road Intermediate School, Erica Club. An instructional assistant from Hillsborough Elementary School, Bernadette Mertens. All right, I need to hear that again. An instructional assistant from Hillsborough High School, Mary Kessler. A media specialist from Hillsborough Middle School, Taisha Gato Barrera. An instructional assistant from Sunnymead Elementary School, Nahal Hamad. An interventionist from Triangle Elementary School, Jill Ann Hanam. A school counselor from Wood Fern Elementary School, Allison Jelsomino. A learning disabilities teaching consultant from Woods Road Elementary School, Kristen There are so many outstanding educators who do so many wonderful things, but let's take a moment to give a round of applause for our Educational Services Professionals. You know, the final slide behind me says, "I touch the future, I teach." It's also whatever kind of educator you are. I had mentioned, it doesn't matter what you do, if you're an employee of the Hillsborough Township Public Schools, you are an educator, and you are involved in educating children, and I appreciate everything that you do every day, and I can't wait till the next time I come around to your schools and see the great things you're doing. Thank you for coming out tonight, and well deserved, of course.
We're going to take a five-minute recess for everybody to celebrate with the people that came to see them, and then we'll continue the meeting in five minutes.
Thank you for joining. If you would like to, you could please either take a seat or say your goodbyes. Maybe I need one of those principals to come up here and bang a gavel.
All right, hello and welcome back. We're back from our five-minute, seven-minute, 10-minute break, whatever that wound up being. Uh, we are now going to move on to the approval of minutes. Uh, 8.1, motion to approve public meeting minutes. 21224, motion to approve special meeting minutes. 21624. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm gonna have to abstain on both of those.
On both of those, okay. All right, uh, besides the abstention, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now move on to comments from the board public. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment on any items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's for violation 0167. Before you state your comment, you will ask to provide your name and address. There's a 30-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions. Rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. And if there's a board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times a member of the public takes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. All right, seeing no, nobody up at the podium, we will close public comment. Before we move on to the action agenda, are there any board members that have any comments? Just leave it open. Ms. Stats.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, comment on the, uh, new proposal for, uh, proposal for a new course, conversational and compositional Spanish 2 CP. And this is proposed to, uh, accommodate the, meet the needs of, uh, students who are struggling in, uh, the existing Spanish 2 CP. So this is an additional, uh, CP course in, at the Spanish 2 level. And, uh, I'm glad that we're, uh, addressing the needs of a population that, um, the only recourse if they were struggling would be to drop it. Or not take it at all. But, and I invite to have a reconsideration of that same accommodation for students in other CP classes such as in English and math, where, uh, they don't even have the recourse to drop it. They have to take, uh, three years of CP math, uh, four years of, of CP English. And there's only one level of it. And the way of struggling students, um, that, uh, don't have any recourse other than to stick with it and fail or, uh, do very poorly. Um, and just as other districts have, uh, two levels of CP. And, and the Spanish 2 CP still satisfy the standards. So just as other districts have two levels of CP that satisfy the standards for those respective courses, um, I think we should consider having another level of CP in, uh, uh, especially in English and math, uh, to accommodate the needs of our struggling students.
All right, thank you for your comment, Ms. Stats.
To follow up on Ms. Stats's comments, I would just wonder like, what is the process for having that consideration? I did not get a chance to read the minutes for education. So how did these conversational and compositional Spanish 2 come to be?
Um, the teachers who typically teach, um, ICR Spanish 2, um, came together with Dr. Redwan and had a conversation, um, Spanish 2 ICR is not being offered. Um, many of the students tended to drop that course. Um, and they were looking for a course that was conversational and compositional in nature. They need to be able to speak and listen and read and write, um, and in, in a more practical manner than the traditional learn grammar, learn the literature, learn the, the, um, the whole cultural component of Spanish. Um, and so that's how it came to be.
So it was from the staff who were noticing that, is that why?
Yes.
And what does ICR stand for?
In-class resource.
Okay, so is that a gen, like, is that class available to, like, for everybody?
The compositional, yes, it's a gen ed course, but it'll be written into the IEPs of students who, who need it.
So then for, um, a course similar to what Ms. Stats has been advocating over the years, what would that process look like to evaluate?
Oh, the same way this does. Teachers, teachers meet with the supervisors to talk about a, uh, you know, a course that would be appropriate to bring forward to education committee, you know, that meets the standards that then gets, can be approved. Um, you know, we were looking for a course that would be NCAA approved for any students who are also athletes so that they would get college credit for this as well.
From, from the board's perspective, the next step would be to bring ideas to the education committee?
Correct, yes. Yeah, the course proposals come up, right.
Okay, so would that just be like here or do we speak to Ms. Jackson offline? What would be the next step? So you said education committee, but I understand that to bring it to an agenda, we should speak to the chair.
But, so I, just, I think what you're clarifying is can we bring that in? Or does it have to come from the teacher to recommend that course, kind of the way this did? Or can it just be added to the education agenda?
We can bring anything for discussion to a committee meeting. Uh, I think we frequently do that if, if board members come to, uh, bring things that they want to discuss, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'm making that request? I, I'm just like, I just want to be clear because I, because sometimes it's like, well, we kind of talk about it and then like, we're not really sure what the next step is. So is this like a request, but it's probably going to be after budget season? So like, how does it get added to the agenda? Do we pick one now or should I just talk to, chat a layoff?
Yeah, I believe Ms. Jackson is the chair of the, of the committee, who's, who's right there. You can coordinate with her for whatever the next meeting is and it can be a discussion of the committee members.
Cool.
I, I just want to follow up that, um, this was, uh, on the agenda of the edu- education committee, I believe, last year, that I had asked to be added. But, um, I think the concern was about it, uh, about why we did not have standard levels, even though my request was about, um, creating two levels of CP. And now that it seems like there's been, um, uh, an acknowledgement of the need for that, uh, for Spanish 2. So, um, hopefully that can expand the consideration of that for, uh, other CP level courses.
Yeah, makes sense. All right, great. All right. Uh, so we, seeing that, I guess unless there's any other comments, we can move on to the action agenda?
Sure. I would ask for the board's consideration in the area of education to approve the following motions. Professional travel-related expenses, affirming the superintendent's HIV determinations, curriculum writing, staff for multiple language learners wraparound program, overnight trip, field trip destination, new books, new course proposal as just stated, submission of grant application, expanding access to climate change education and the New Jersey student learning standards through interdisciplinary learning, community resilience. And 10, motion to approve acceptance of the 2023-24 stabilization aid, as I mentioned in my report, in the amount of $310,456.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, yes, but I'd like to abstain from 10.9.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes, except on 10.1, I'm voting no for the staff member traveling to Colorado.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of human resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following motions. Approving retirements and resignations, appointments for 2324, appointments for 2425, approving leaves of absence, transferring changes in assignment, change in employment status, spring coaches, mentors and buddies, sixth and seventh period coverage, extra coverage, and approving student teacher.
Uh, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, yes, with the abstain for 11.2.
11.2, you said?
Um, yes.
Okay. Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes.
Ms. Marini? Yes, motion passes.
In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Uh, accepting monthly financials, line item transfers, financial status, monthly bills, a proposal for an Eagle Scout project at Triangle Elementary School, memorandum of agreement with Rutgers University, approving second public bidding for HHS fire shutters, approving out-of-district placements for 2324, approving disposal and sale of obsolete equipment, and accepting a donation.
Uh, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes. Move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome members of the public during board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for a comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's for violation 0167. Before you state your comment, you will ask to provide your name and address. There's a 30-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer session, but rather those offer us opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. If there's a board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address your comment. There may be times a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
My name is Tiffany Neal and I live in Hillsborough. I'm a public health professional and Hillsborough parent, and I'm here to advocate for healthy school hours. As I have described before, a wealth of scientific research shows that kids' biological clock shifts about two hours later during puberty. Early school start times prevent teenagers from getting the eight to 10 hours of sleep they need. Middle and high school start times after 8:30 a.m. lead to improvements in mental health, physical health, and academic achievement. Isn't that what we want for all our kids? I'm not the only concerned resident who wants to see later school start times. Tonight, I brought a community petition that urges you to adopt healthy school hours in Hillsborough with 305 signatures. You may also have heard about a poll done last year by Fairleigh Dickinson University, which found that a majority of New Jersey residents support later high school start times. Additionally, the Healthier Somerset Coalition's Community Health Improvement Plan, which is a strategic plan for health, recommends later school start times to improve behavioral health for students. I know that transportation would need to be adjusted in order to change school hours. Fortunately, we would not increase costs for the district if we rearrange the schedules of our schools and keep the same number of best tiers we have now. In fact, when other school districts have implemented healthy school hours, during their in-depth transportation analysis, they often find inefficiencies that can be corrected. This could actually save the district money or allow us to bring back the courtesy busing that was cut several years ago and had a negative impact on many families. As you continue to work on a strategic plan for the school district, I would like to share the following quote. It is from Dr. Ken Draxeth, a now-retired superintendent, who led the very first decision to start school later based on sleep research back in 1996. He said, and I quote, "Change is hard, but if your job is to look out for students, this is a no-brainer. Starting school later was the most significant and beneficial decision I made in all the years I was an educator." Mr. Volpe, when you first spoke a year ago after being hired as our new superintendent, you said that you wanted to be transformative. This is your opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Henry Goody, Hillsborough Education Association. Um, realize this is not question and answer, but just want to pose this for a matter of clarification. So if the questions can't be answered, that's perfectly fine. Um, but I would hope that the board asked about this as well. In relation to the conversation that took place to the Spanish, uh, the new Spanish class that was approved, there was discussion about writing it into IEPs, but it is a gen ed class. So I was just curious how that will function and how it will populate in the system for guidance counselors to see. Like, is this a gen ed class that's open to all gen ed students? Is it a gen ed class specifically geared towards students who would typically have ICR 2 written into their IEP? In which case, is it really a gen ed class? Um, so I just wanted to ask that question because I had heard a couple of different things being discussed and I didn't want there to be, um, misunderstanding as this kind of rolled out and became a new class. Um, if we could just share like how students will enter into it, what kind of supports they'll receive when they're in there? And is this a conversational Spanish gen ed class open for everyone? Or is it going to be specifically tailored towards those students who typically would have an IEP-driven class like ICR 2, which won't be there anymore? So I appreciate any clarification that could be given on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Leisha Gabriel-Balas. I live in Hillsborough. In case you haven't heard, on Saturday, March 9th, we're going to be having the Wizards game. It's coming to town. Every two years it comes, and this is the year. I would like to just invite everybody, you don't have to be a parent or a student at On Road School. Everybody in the community is welcome to join. Come see our teachers and our staff play against the Harlem Wizards. And you can look online for tickets, find it on Facebook, or you could ask me. Um, just, everyone is welcome and it's going to be a great time. Hope you can make it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no others, that will close public comment. We'll move to board comment. I think Rio, um, had a update?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some updates on the Action Committee and some events that are happening within the high school. So, starting with the Action Committee specifically with the classroom rules. I've been talking to several students within the high school and have gained more insight. And I was hoping to bring some solutions to our next Action Committee meeting within the high school, which is actually in the beginning, beginning of March, including implementing some sort of alarm system or other aspects or other solutions that I'll talk about within the meeting. And to talk about some events that are happening within the high school, I want to bring attention to the International Art Showcase, which is scheduled to happen on April 17th. And essentially what that is, it's a showcase that all the language honor society put together within the high school. And it's a great way to see various cultures such as French Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and all the other societies to showcase the various cultures of their respective languages. And it's a great way to see the various unique, uh, cultures of every language.
All right, thanks for the update. Mr. Davis?
I would like to, uh, comment on something. This is, uh, just a personal thing. Has to do with my own opinion, has nothing to do with the board directly. The disclaimer, I'm just speaking as, as a citizen. But, um, there's a, uh, a piece of legislation, a bill that was being offered in Trenton. Uh, I believe it's called the, the right to read or the privilege to read, whatever it is. And it has to do with, it really circles around the issue of communities, parents, whatever groups, having objections about materials and books and things like that being presented at school. And one of the provisions in the bill that was offered was to offer, uh, protection against prosecution on the part of school staff, uh, either in civil actions or in other actions by members of the community. So, uh, and I think there was some action in South Jersey where parents are suing the school. They may be suing the librarian for placing certain materials objectionable in their minds, materials in the library. And there was a bit of an outcry. People went to Trenton to testify and things like that. And the bill has been pulled back. My understanding as of today is, uh, and Senators Wicker was the sponsor, who's our senator. And, uh, it's being reviewed for amendment and so on. And I just want to point out that I, I find the premise of this bill to be fundamentally disturbing. Uh, it's in essence, and, and I'm exaggerating perhaps, uh, over-exaggerating, but, uh, the objection on the part of some community members and parents is that some of these materials that are being presented or promoted through the schools could be judged as being pornographic in their depictions according to statute in the state of New Jersey. And so in one way, we could view this bill by Senators Wicker and others, as a way of protecting school staff from violating the laws that were put in place, supposedly to isolate or to protect children from being exposed to such materials. And so it seems to me that to propose that the answer to the situation is to quell dissent and to isolate or immunize school officials from being criticized or, or having to pay a penalty for violating the law. This, this is something that once this, uh, toothpaste gets out of the tube, there's, there's no putting it back. There's no way of knowing where this kind of licensing would end up with and what kind of horrible situations would unfold with, with this being put forth. And this board is, has nothing to do with this directly. I, I just want to make these statements because I am deeply concerned personally that such a notion would even be presented as, as law here in the state of New Jersey. I know there's contention, if you will, between the schools and the communities in some places. I don't think the answer is to threaten, to quell members of the community and immunize school staff from criticism and complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members that want to make, Ms. Stats?
I just want to talk about the, uh, the High School Musical, Something Rotten. They just had a few performances this past weekend. Just not observing, uh, some of their rehearsals. Um, the talent is amazing, singing, dancing, um, uh, the, the orchestra pit, the set, the stage crew. I'm sorry if I'm forgetting anybody, but it's, it's also hilarious. It's very enjoyable. It's very enjoyable. And people I know that have seen it from, you know, teenagers through those of us of a certain age, everyone seems to be enjoying it. For those of you who haven't seen it yet, or if you want to see it again, there will be two more performances Friday night and Saturday night at seven. You can get tickets online and also at the door. But I also want to address what Mr. Davis brought up. Teachers are, and, well, school staff in general have been undergoing lots of criticism, some of which is very disrespectful, and at, at least to protect them from lawsuits, I think it's minimum. I, I think I welcome any kind of challenge or criticisms of what schools do, but I do think people should be protected from lawsuits. We have a teacher shortage, and this kind of thing is just going to, just going to expand that even more, not to mention a threat to censorship. I've heard people misuse the terms grooming, pedophiles, groomers, accusing teachers, school staff, of all that because of whatever the curriculum is. They're supporting all students. They're not recruiting them to be any certain kind of member of the population. They're just supporting them, whoever they, whatever the students may identify to be. And protecting them from lawsuits is a minimum thing, but I welcome anyone to criticize curriculum or practices that are actually taking place, not pure conjecture based on what's happening elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, we'll see you in a couple weeks.